The following is a special news presentation of 1230 W S O O Sioux St. Marie. Good evening and welcome to the League of Women Voters, the Eastern Upper Peninsula's Chippewa County Commission Candidate Forum. The panel portion of this candidate forum will conclude around nine P M. Election Day is Tuesday, November third. Polls open at seven A M. And close at eight P M. Absentee voting is happening now, and you no longer need to an excuse to vote this way. So if you want or need to apply for an absentee ballot, visit the Michigan Secretary of State's website for an application, or talk with your township, city, or county clerk. Election information, including deadlines for absentee voting and registering to vote, as well as information about polling locations and identification are on the league's election resource, I'm your moderator for this County Commission Candidate Forum, Marks and Angelo. I'm the Operations Manager at Sovereign Communications and the Morning Show Host here on 1230 W S O O. And the team helping to make tonight a success is Amy. She's our timekeeper, operating the digital clock. She's doing double duty tonight, also taking your questions. Kelly and Paul are working behind the scenes on Zoom and YouTube technology so that we can be here virtually. Thank you to our volunteers for their work to make this forum happen tonight. We are also broadcasting tonight live on 1230 W S O O and streaming on our website, 1230wso.com, as well as the league's YouTube channel. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization and encourages informed and active participation in government. It works to increase understanding of major public policy issues and influences policy through education and advocacy. The League of Women Voters is strictly nonpartisan. It neither supports nor opposes candidates for offices at any level of government, nor does it support or oppose political parties. Any event sponsored by the League of Women Voters will be conducted with the utmost respect of neutrality and nonpartisanship. Our intention here tonight is to conduct a public event with fairness and even headedness. We thank you all for attending this evening's forum or listening on the radio or online. We look forward to a lively discussion about issues important to all of us here in Chippewa County. And thank you to our candidates for stepping up and deciding to run for office. Democracy takes sacrifice and courage, and people who run for office exhibit these qualities. So thank you each of you. Before I introduce the candidates, let me review the ground rules for this evening's event. Typically, at an in-person candidate forum, we would have a table at the back of the room with candidates' campaign literature. But since we're all here together virtually, the league recommends that you check each of the candidates' websites. You can, of course, learn more about them at vot411.org. For tonight's forum, everyone except myself and the panelist speaking is muted to reduce distractions and to allow the candidates to have your attention. We hope you will ask questions, and if you do have a question for the candidates, we ask that it be written in a way that both candidates may answer that is respectful and that you put it in a Q and A, in the Q and A area. Amy will read through the, or Heidi is guessing, read through the questions, try to find three or four that best encompass what you are wanting to learn. Unfortunately, we only have time for a few questions, so we'll not get to everyone's questions tonight. Candidates' responses will be timed by league volunteers. Each candidate will have two minutes to make an opening statement. We've actually decided that we didn't draw because we're not together, so we're going to go in alphabetical order by their last name. After our opening statements, candidates will take questions and we'll alternate who speaks first. Following the introductions of the candidates, candidates will have each, each have one minute to respond to questions asked by the league, by you, the audience, and by members of the community who emailed or Facebook messages before the start of tonight's event. Again, responses to these questions will also be limited to one minute. Again, candidates, thank you for joining us tonight, so let's get started. And who do we have here? We have Eric Barron joining us, Don McLean, Jim Martin. Do we have Mr. Johnson and Mr. Savoy with us tonight?
Hey, Mark, this is Amy. I think we may actually have Mr. Savoy. I think he's as a participant. So if you can see the participant side, the last four numbers are six, six, two, nine. At the top of my screen.
I see right there. Yep, okay.
So I don't, we might need to find out if we can hear him before we continue.
Okay, well, let's see, Mr. Savoy, can we hear you there, Robert? What he needs to do to?
I'm not sure if Kelly or Paul can click on a button and help us.
Technology.
Yeah. I do not see him here in order to unclick him.
He's in the, he was in the attendee list. Now he's not there anymore. I do not see his number, phone number in the attendee list anymore.
Okay, I'm sorry. That was Mr. Savoy, and he is not able to come in because he's, he's stuck as a participant and not a panelist. You know, with Zoom, there are its challenges, and it'd be great.
Yeah, we could move him forward, but I don't see him on the list.
Oh, he just, he's getting come back in. He's going to come and listen. So once he comes back in, if that, if you can do that, that would be fantastic.
Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry.
As we like to say in radio, please stand by.
Isn't that the truth?
We're experiencing technical difficulties. Please stand by. This is all new territory for all of us, so. And this Zoom and Zoom and broadcasting it on the radio, I know this is maybe not the best radio. You know, with all, you know, silence and everything, but there's, there he's back there. Now he's in the attendee list. I see his phone number there, so. Oh, and there he is. Now, I don't know who's gonna, Mr. Savoy, can you hear us?
I can hear you now.
Excellent. All right. Perfect.
Great. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. We will get to you here in just a minute there, Bob. Let's start, we're going to do our candidate introductions. Each candidate has two minutes to introduce themselves, and as we said, we're going in alphabetical order. So Eric Barron, you get the floor first. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How's everybody doing this evening?
Very well, thank you.
Thank you. Glad everybody can hear me. I'd just want to introduce myself as Eric Barron to everybody out there who may not know me or heard of my name. A long time resident, a full-time resident of Chippewa County. I decided to run this year for District Three County Commission. And you're right, it is a hard decision to make to run for a political seat like this. Took a lot of decision making, a lot of time to come up with that decision. I'd just like to thank everybody nice for coming out now. Hopefully I can answer some questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much there, Mr. Barron. Next up, I do not believe, is Mr. Johnson not with us, Amy?
Unfortunately, he did not make it. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. That's fine. So our next candidate for introduction is Jim Martin. Good morning, Coach, or good evening, Coach. How are you today?
Good, good. Thanks for having us. Appreciate that, Mark, and Amy in the league. Great to be here and Mr. Barron, Mr. McLean, also Mr. Savoy. Long story short, it's about public service, and yes, it is a difficult decision, and it takes a lot of time. But I think we need people who unite us, people bring people together, will fight Lansing for our fair share, protect our small businesses, which, I mean, that's the hub of our economy. Eliminate government waste because we need to spend every dollar wisely and protect our environment. And most importantly, as a father of three, attract good paying jobs here so we can keep more of our children here. I've been here for, for just over 25 years. My wife born and raised here in the Sioux, and it's, it's part of giving back. It's, it's kind of of the way I was raised. This community has given my family and myself so much. We owe them so much. And that's why I got involved in, in politics. Plus, as a government teacher, how great is that, that you can tell kids, you know, you can get involved too, and you can be part of the process, and you can be part of the solution? Because look what I did, because quite frankly, I wasn't in politics my whole life, never ran for anything, never, never joined a party. But just felt like it was, it was time to give back, and this has been a wonderful opportunity for me to give back and at the same time still be able to teach and coach and be a father and a good husband and be active in our church. I mean, that's really the beauty of local politics is you get to give back to your community and hopefully watch what you do grow and make the community better.
Thank you very much there, Mr. Martin, Mr. McLean. Good evening. How are you this evening, sir?
Just fine. Thank you. I'm Don McLean. I was born in Chippewa County and have lived and worked here most of my life. I've been married for 53 years, have a son, a daughter-in-law, and three terrific granddaughters, all residing in Chippewa County. I taught school for 31 years, working in the Sioux Area Public Schools as a teacher, assistant principal, and three years as a principal, principal at Sioux Area Middle School. After retiring, I worked part-time at Lake Spear State University while operating the family farm on Six Mile Road. I was elected to the County Commission in 2008, and I have served for 12 years proudly representing the residents of Bruce, Dafter, Sioux, and Sugar Island Townships. That sums it up.
Thank you very much there, Mr. McLean and Mr. Savoy. It is your turn, sir.
Well, thank you for having me. I appreciate it. Like Mr. McLean, I was born and raised in Chippewa County, graduated from Rugyard High School, was drafted into the United States Army right out of school where I served a combat tour in Vietnam. When I came home and married my high school sweetheart, we have two children I raised. I attended some classes at school at Northern Michigan University in Marquette, obtained my degree and certification as a police officer, joined the Chippewa County Sheriff's Office, where I served for 39 years. The last two terms I served as sheriff. So I've been involved since then. I've been a commissioner for two full terms. I've been involved in county government for 44 years. I think I have a pretty good working knowledge of every department within the county. I know what our mandated obligations are, what services we have to provide, and I feel I'm compassionate and sensitive to the needs of our citizens. And I'd like to serve some more, so thank you.
Thank you very much there, Bob. Appreciate that. We'll move on to our question and answer. And again, the, the answers will be just one minute. And Bob, since you're on the phone, we'll, we may have to cut you off if you go a little bit over since you can't see the timer on the phone, all right?
Okay, thank you.
All right. And our first question is, what will you do to ensure Chippewa County works with our Native American community members, especially during this COVID-19 pandemic? And our first respondent for one minute will be Jim Martin. Jim?
Yeah, I think it's really important that we all work together. And obviously, as a coach, that's, that's what I do for a living. It's very important to bring leadership together at the county level, city level, school district. Obviously, Mr. Newland and Mr. Paymont with, with the tribe, that we all work together, find common ground and, and fight, quite frankly, COVID or any economic issues that we have that arise out of it, that we fight those things together, and we work together to, to mitigate what, what could be a very bad outcome, both medically and financially. And really, we have done a fine job. The people in Health Department, Sioux Tribe, Bay Mills, City, County, have all worked tirelessly along with Memorial Hospital to, to keep us safe and keep things going in the right direction. Thanks.
Mr. McLean, same question.
Okay, I, um, the tribes are very important to our community. We need to recognize that. And I have, I know Aaron Paymont quite well. Him and I, we served together on the Community Action Board for a few years. I think I echo what Mr. Martin has had to say, you know, we, we need to work together. We need to talk and, and I guess conference with each other. I'm, I'm working presently, I'm chairman of the Chippewa County E D C, and we're working real closely with the tribes, with Mr. Newland and Mr. Paymont relative to attracting industries that will better serve our community and increase jobs and make this a more prosperous place. And, and that's, again, the spirit of cooperation. I think the relationship between the tribes has improved.
Mr. McLean, you have, we're over past your minute there. Appreciate.
That's good enough. I can chat up right there. Thank you.
Very good. Apologize for interrupting you there. And Mr. Savoy, you're next.
Okay, yeah, I'm very proud of the working relationship I have with the tribes. I think same way, it's important that we work together, but I have a proven track record that I've worked with the tribes. Most of my close friends are tribal members, both in Sioux Tribe and Bay Mills. As sheriff, I was able to obtain the very first signed mutual aid agreement with the Bay Mills Tribe, and we have one with Sioux Tribe, which continues to this day. So again, I'm proud of the relationship I have, and I hope to continue that.
Thank you very much, sir. And Mr. Barron?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Everybody has some great answers, but I believe communication is the key. I believe all three entities have really good healthcare services in this county, and communication is a big part to just communicating with each other, working together on this coronavirus is the big issue. And communication, I believe, is the key, working together. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barron. Our next question is, how do you plan to keep county residents informed of new county information and to ensure there is opportunity for residents to be engaged? Our first respondent will be Mr. McLean.
The, the County Commission in the county has a website which is updated. We do what we can to get information out to the, to the people. I make sure, the COVID has interrupted it, but I usually get to the individual township board meetings at least once every six months and explain an update to them what is going on with the county. I also do this with a group called the Michigan Township Association, which meets once a month at Kinross. And I always provide an update as to what's going on with county business and the latest information also on what the E D C is up to since I'm part of that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Savoy?
Yes, I echo the same thing. Chippewa County has 15 townships, and District Five, which is my district, I have eight of those townships out of 15. So I have a large area. I think it's important to attend the meetings, get to know the township supervisors, the trustees, and I hope to continue to do that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barron?
Yeah, keeping in touch with the community and everybody that lives in these districts is very important. Plan on making myself as visible as possible in these townships, you know, attending meetings, talking to people. Websites are nice if people get on there and look at them, but I'm thinking if people get out in the communities and just talk to people, keep in touch with those townships, attend all those meetings, keep, keep people informed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Martin? Oh, you need to unmute yourself there, Mr. Martin.
I don't.
So you're still muted there, Mr. Martin?
I did it again. All right. Long, long story short here, internet is, is good. I get a lot of emails. I, I have a lot of constituents who go to websites, have questions. It's helped us clean up our websites. That is, is the future of Chippewa County. Communication is, is obviously internet. Otherwise, we obviously, we talk with phone and, and, and talk to people on the street. Bottom line is doing doors. You get to talk to all kinds of people, whether they voted for you or not, and talk to their, talk to them about their concerns. We do have websites, especially with COVID. It's really important that they go to that website, see what we have as far as cases and whatnot that day. And also the newspaper and, and radio and the fact that our meetings are broadcast is very, very important to help people and keep people informed so they can, they can ask good questions. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Time for our next question. We're plowing right through these here. What professional experience has helped you with budgeting and balancing constituents' needs? And our first respondent to this question will be Mr. Savoy.
Yes, yes, under sheriff and sheriff, the sheriff's office has probably the largest budget in the county government and more line items. It's very extensive. I also served 12 years on local school board here, was involved in the budgeting process. I still operate the family farm here and do all of the financial decisions and bookkeeping myself. So I think I have the experience and the knowledge to continue that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barron?
Yeah, I've got 10 years managing a local trucking company up here in the eastern upper Michigan. Balancing and budgeting is a daily thing for me, so, you know, meeting the needs of the constituents is just like meeting the needs of your employees. So after 10 years of running a trucking company, I think I have what it takes to be a county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Martin?
Yeah, as far as my professional life goes, obviously, budget's tight in schools, whether we're talking to Social Studies Department or whether we're talking our cross-country or track team. Also, though, I've spent five years as chair of the Finance Committee, going through the books, itemizing, questioning charges, questioning expenditures, making sure that, that we run as lean a machine as we can. Fact of the matter is that our, our, our county has done an excellent job financially because we get money back from our departments every year. Our fund up idea is, is up to about $5 million, and that's going to allow us to, to get through the train wreck that the, that COVID is going to do to budgets all over the state. Chippewa County, because we have been so frugal, because we do take great care in planning our budget. We're going to be fine. We're going to get through COVID, we believe, without layoffs and without any diminishing of services.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. And Mr. McLean?
I worked as an assistant principal and a principal for the Sioux Area Schools for a number of years, and each of those positions involved budgeting, making decisions as to how the money was spent and staffing and that type of thing. Presently, my involvement at the Chippewa County Economic Development Corporation as chairman, I'm on all of the committees, and one of them is the Finance Committee, and we're always looking at the money that we have and the needs that we have and how we can spend that money wisely and get, attract industries and do that type of thing. So I've been involved with budgets for a long time, and it's been helpful. And I echo Mr. Martin's comments through the efforts of the county employees and the commission and the staff. We've kept a good lean budget, and we've accumulated funds that will help us through these difficult times. Great staff at the Chippewa County.
Thank you, sir. On to our next question. If someone came to you with a proposal to build a new piece of public infrastructure in our county, whether it's a road, bridge, community health facility or whatever, how would you evaluate whether that project was worth implementing? And we're back around to, to Mr. Barron for the first answer.
Well, if someone comes to you with something, a project like that, you really got to take the time to look at it. You got to get public input. I mean, if it's, if it's a bridge or anything like that, you have environmental impact, you have costs, you have funding, where, you know, where's the money going to come from for that project? There's a lot of planning that goes into these projects, which I hope that I get to take to be a part of. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Martin?
Yeah, bottom line here is you're looking at cost benefit analysis. Is, is, is the county, is, is the resident of the county, residents of the county, are they gonna, are they going to benefit from this? That's, you know, I hate to, to cut it so short, but really, that's just it. Is, is the project worth the money that we put into it? Is it necessary, especially again, going forward with the budget? We, these are things we have to know, and we have to have, we have to have the ability to basically check our ego at the door and defer a lot of these decisions to the experts that, that build these things or that propose these things. But if we, if we deem that, that it works for us, then we move forward with it. If not, we don't spend taxpayer dollars lightly.
Mr. McLean? Oh, you need to unmute yourself there, Mr. McLean.
There you go. Thank you. I think that if you're talking infrastructure, one of the key parties in this choices or decisions would be, of course, the County Road Commission, if it's some kind of a bridge or road or whatever. And we, you would have to go through public hearings and held public meetings to find out just what the constituents think of the idea. I've gone through a number of things where I thought it was just terrific, but you go to a public meeting and all of a sudden people come up with things that you didn't realize were a case, and you have to look at the, listen to those. In some cases, you have to change your mind. Also, we have a resource called the Michigan Association of Counties, which hopefully would have encountered this group before and would be able to provide some background history or insight into just what it's all about. Thank you.
And Mr. Savoy?
Yes, I think by the time it gets to the county board, there's been studies, engineering studies, public hearings. A lot of these roads, bridges, and all those kind of projects, there's probably matching funds. There's state and federal grants and monies. So by the time it gets to us, I, I'm not aware of any commissioner that would oppose any commissioner in the future or in the past that would oppose infrastructure improvements. So, you know, just like my colleagues had said, I think we support that type of, and hope we have more of that type of action.
Thank you, sir. Next question is, if there is a major economic downturn in the coming year or years during your term, what are your funding priorities in Chippewa County? And I do believe our first answer this time is Mr. Martin.
Yes, thanks. First priority, obviously, is safety. Our first priority is going to be the Sheriff's Department. It's going to be Department of Corrections. But we also need to not lose sight of, of why people turn that direction when, when the economy goes south. And I think we still need to, to continue to invest in, in mental health services and help people through the things that are causing them to do that, joblessness. We need to fund job training, Michigan Works, things like that, to get people back on their feet, training, if that's maybe night school or, or trade school or something like that, anything like that that we can do to help people recover, and especially in our area. The, the other issue is that with the mental health issue and with the drug court, we can help mitigate a lot of those problems that people have because they feel despair. And I think we, with our budget being what it is, we can support the things we need to support to help people get through a rough time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McLean?
Okay, here we go. Thank you. I keep putting that mute, and then I lose where I am relative to it. I think that, you know, we look at, we have to look at, as Mr. Martin and Mr. Savoy have pointed out, the safety of, I guess, Mr. Martin, or Mr. Savoy hasn't spoken yet, but there are certain things that we have to look at taking care of safety, the courts, the county clerk, register of deeds and treasurer's office. Those are all public services that we provide for the county, and they make the county operations function. And we need to make sure that those are up and running. You know, if that's handled, then you can look into other areas. You know, if that's handled, then you can look into other areas that, such as community action, if there was a downturn, we, we're very busy with that right now on community action. That's another board that I serve on in providing, um, foods, substance, you know, for subsistence for people, heating help, all that type of thing. And, uh, so, but we, the main function we have is county services.
Thank you, sir. Uh, and Mr. Savoy.
Yes, our funding priorities are dictated by the Michigan constitution. Like Mr. McLean said, we have to maintain a jail, sheriff's office, a prosecutor, accounting clerk, uh, the courts, uh, treasurer, register deeds and list goes on and on. But we also financially support a lot of other non-mandated, departments and agencies and offices. So, you know, I, I would think worst case scenario, we might have to downsize a little bit and I hope that doesn't happen. But, but there are certain departments that we cannot shut down according to the constitution.
Thank you, sir. And, uh, final question from the League of Women Voters, uh, this evening and our first respondent will be Mr. McLean. Uh, the Chippewa County Sheriff has expressed serious concerns about the lack of mental health services in the region. Uh, what will you do to bring relief, uh, to this health crisis in our community? Mr. McLean?
I'm quite familiar with the situation of the lack of mental health services in our community. And, uh, the sheriff has done as much as, you know, done as much as he can. We had that tragic case during the winter of a fellow who was a Vietnam veteran, got stranded up here. We weren't able to handle it and the state couldn't find a bed for him. Uh, and the sheriff did the right thing. He went public and got some attention and the state all of a sudden found a bed for this person and he got the help he so desperately needed. It's, it's something that I think you don't really understand until it hits you between the eyes, a personal kind of situation. And, um, we need to do whatever we can. Our involvement with high Watha behavioral health is important. We need to have input there and, uh, work desperately with, with the state in finding the services. But I think part of it is that the community is not aware, public is not aware of just how desperate this gets.
Mr. Savoy.
Yes, I was surprised this question came up because last month we passed the sheriff's, uh, health budget and I asked the, the undersheriff in jail administrators there, uh, was the commissioner that asked this, is there any, any increases in mental health? And they said, no. We did add an extra nurse to the jail. But there's not a sheriff in the country that won't tell you there's, uh, not a mental health problems in the jail. And in Michigan, this was created back about 12 or 13 years ago under the Granholm administration. They sought a, a AG Attorney General opinion that the opinion said that, uh, the state did not have to provide any mental health services in the county jails. So we had an excellent program going with the high Watha behavioral health, but they had to pull out and it forced the 83 sheriffs to make contractual services.
Uh, we've run out of time there for your response. Thank you, sir. Mr. Baron.
Yeah, I agree with, uh, Mr. Savoy on that, uh, funding's a big, big issue when it comes to mental health services. I mean, working locally with, uh, local mental health services, but there is a big lack of funding. I think we also see a lack of training in that area too. Um, and I, that's been brought to my attention is we need to implement some more training in that area through the sheriff's office than the jails in this community. Thank you.
Mr. Martin.
Yeah, this was something just, uh, a, a month or so before the pandemic that, uh, I dealt with, with Mr. Meister and Farnquist and Mr. McKinney at HPH. And yes, I had talked to the undersheriff and Lieutenant Stanaway also. And it, it breaks your heart, the people who need mental health services in our jail. And, and we, we do the very best we can. And in the end, we ended up, uh, subcontracting out to a, a local mental health professional to try to, to get help for people who desperately need it in our, in our jails. It's one of the reasons why they're there. And you ask anybody in corrections, how many prisoners, if you will, that they see every day who, who aren't really criminals, but who are, have mental health illness and they make bad choices because of it. This is someplace we have to go, we have to visit, we have to find money, uh, to take care of this problem. But, you know, we can't do it ourselves in Chippewa County. We need help from Lansing, period.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Uh, and that concludes the, uh, questions that were posed, uh, prior to tonight from the, the League of Women Voters. Uh, we'll now open it up for any audience, uh, questions and, uh, our timekeeper who's doing double duty, Amy. Uh, do we have any questions from the audience to be asked?
We don't so far. So for those that are sitting on, uh, we, it looks like we have 13 attendees. We would love to see some of your questions so that we could ask them.
Okay. If you, if you get any, let me know and, and we'll, we'll certainly get to them. Uh, I did have a couple of questions, uh, that, uh, I wanted to ask and I guess we're to, uh, to Mr. Savoy will be answering, uh, first at this point. Obviously we're, we're in the middle of, uh, this, this COVID pandemic. It started back in March and it's continues. A lot of us, I don't think real thought at the time that it was going to be here in October, just a few weeks away from election day. Still talking about COVID-19 and being in this, uh, obviously, uh, so many different aspects of our society have been affected by it. But it's obviously economic, uh, is, is a big part of that. Mr. Savoy, uh, what's, what's your biggest concern, uh, once we get to the other side, uh, of this pandemic? The, maybe some long lasting effects, uh, on the county and how would you address those?
Well, I, I think it's going to be, uh, taking a major impact on our small businesses. I, I see a lot of them that probably never open again. I don't see restaurants, uh, going back to full capacity. All other small businesses and, and because of that, uh, there's a lot of people in, in this county that work in those types of jobs and it's going to create some real financial, uh, issues and burdens to them. Again, when you, when you have a, a downturn in the economy, you have more mental health, you have more crime, you have more, uh, alcohol and drug abuse and use. So the trickle down effect is huge on the county. And I think it was, we spoke tonight. We don't know where the state and federal budgets are going to come in, where we get revenue sharing. So we have some huge, uh,
We've gone, come to your minute. I appreciate this. Maybe a little bit too much of a question for one minute there, but, uh, Mr. Baron, uh, your, your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm in business right now in the trucking industry and we felt a huge impact, you know, during the beginning of the, of the coronavirus, but a lot of companies were shutting down, laying people off. The steel industry took a big hit for, you know, quite a few months. It's still not back to recovery, but small businesses are dying every day and some of them aren't going to come back and we really need to focus on small businesses. Myself as my, you know, having my own small business, you know, it's just not there right now. I don't think it's going to come back. It's gonna be really hard, excuse me, for this country to get back on its feet. And we really need to put focus behind these small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Martin.
I agree. Small business, uh, is, is at the heart of our community economically, uh, socially, and obviously is a place to work. I'm a little more optimistic. I think come March, April, when we get that vaccine, there's so much pent up demand that people are going to go out and, and they're gonna buy more, they're gonna eat out more, they're gonna really get back to the things that they missed during COVID. I, I believe the economy will be back. I do agree though, there will be some small businesses that will not make it. But, uh, I, I really am optimistic that, that we're going to bounce back quickly because of the pent up demand. We, those of us who, who, who are gainfully employed, uh, we, we haven't been able to spend money, we haven't been able to go anywhere. I mean, they will do a lot of things. And, and I think we're not alone in our household. The people are going to go out and they are going to help invigorate the community. And hopefully like at our house, we go out to eat downtown once a week just to try to help out our small businesses there. We all need to do that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. And Mr. McLean.
Uh, at the onset of the pandemic, uh, Mr. Martin came with a suggestion that we should cut back the fees for the various food establishments in the community. And we did that and I think that was appreciated, although it's not a lot of money. We need to continue to expand this in the areas of business regulation. If we can cut back fees and help small businesses in that way. Uh, we need to continue the grant applications that will help local businesses survive. EDC and U P Regional Planning have worked with the Upper Peninsula Organization to, to process the applications for the COVID money that has helped some small businesses. It's not a lot, but it helps some. Uh, we need, we're need, going to be needing to put a lot of effort into economic development. At the present time, we're doing a number of things at the county EDC and, uh, we need to put, we'll have to put more emphasis into that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Amy, any questions from the audience yet?
No, unfortunately. They must be so interested in everybody's comments that they can't come up with a question because they are just glued to this.
They're so riveted. Well, I appreciate that.
Oh, wait, wait, we got one question. Um, what will you do about the homeless in our county?
And our first respondent, I believe at this point is, oh, I don't hate to say, uh, I think it's, uh, Mr. Baron this time.
All right. Well, that's a pretty, pretty big issue actually. Um, we've been known as kind of the end of the bus stop for some of these, these poor people. I mean, they just get put on buses, given a one-way ticket and we have been the recipient of some of these homeless people. I mean, we need to do more and look at more funding for homeless shelters and a little bit more community support for the homeless. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Martin.
I, I agree. It is a, it is a problem that's too big, uh, for anyone entity, anyone agency. It is a community issue, community problem. I believe you have to, to pull in. We, we have so many homeless children in our, in our public schools. It, it is so, um, upsetting that so many kids are in, in a position of, of being homeless. I think the average age of a homeless person in Chippewa County is like 14 years old. But it takes the effort of the churches and the schools and the county and the city and the Salvation Army and, and other service organizations united way to try to, to take care of the homeless as best we can. Uh, we are not a rich community, but we are a community that gives and, and people I, I've seen for decades here just give and give and give and help and help and help because that's what's with St. Maria. That's what Chippewa County is about.
Mr. McLean. You didn't, you gotta unmute yourself there, sir. You're still muted. Mr. McLean, I think you're still muted there, sir. He's stuck on mute.
On the left, Don.
Maybe the cat tripped over the, the wire or something like that. Do you want us to come back to you, Mr. McLean? Yes or no?
Just shake your head.
Okay, you, we'll let you figure it out. We'll go down to, uh, Mr. Savoy and, uh, and get your response. Uh, Bob?
Yes, unfortunately homelessness is a problem. It's a problem nationwide. And you know, it's only going to get worse if the economy goes, uh, south anymore. So I agree, you know, we need, we do a lot in this community to support homelessness. But, uh, I don't think we can ever do enough. We just have to keep, um, continuing, you know, to serve them and help them.
And, uh, Don, did you, did you find the, the button there? Did you get on a different screen maybe? There's a couple of different screens. Maybe you need to click around there. So I'm, I'm not going to be much help. I'm more of a, of a non-visual person than. He can hear me, I know, but I don't think he's, he's lost his mute button.
Hopefully he can get it back. Um, in the meantime, while he's finding it and clean, if you can find it, it's that little microphone, um, on the left. But if, hopefully you'll find it quickly. Um, I, we do have a participant question. And it sounds like the, since we're having a lot of questions, this participant was, um, wondering about revenue. So because we covered issues about homelessness, um, and about mental health, and obviously our community has big challenges, um, and that money has to come from somewhere. And so the participant has asked, would the, if you were elected, would you be willing to support a tax increase to pay for additional services for our community members?
And, uh, I think we'll start with, uh, with Mr. Martin. Looks like the, Mr. McLean's trying to call into the, uh, to here. So, or get some, get some help here. Maybe, uh, Paul's on the phone with him to get it fixed. So, Mr. Martin, we'll start with you and see if we get Don fixed up here in a second.
If, if there is a need and if I, I'm, I'm quite frankly, a big fan of popular sovereignty. Let the people decide. Put a bonding issue out there. If it's something that, that the community wants and is, is willing to pay for, then, then we have an obligation to do that for the community. The budget though, right now is, is very, very tight. So as far as new spending, that's like the infrastructure cost benefit analysis and do the people want it? And if, if people want it, we'll find a way to pay for it. But I much prefer a bond issue or some issue before the voters and let the voters decide if they're willing, uh, to fund something like that. And if they are, great. If not, uh, we will help when and where we can. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. McLean, did you, did we get your resolution? Nope, still no resolution. I feel sorry. It's technology is, is great when it works and boy, when it does it, it's a, it's a pain. We'll come back to you. We promise you, we'll get you back here and get you a chance to answer those questions. We'll move on to, uh, to, uh, Bob Savoy. Bob?
Yes, if there's a need, uh, again, I'd like to say, I like to be open-minded about additional programs, but if there's a need, I think it's the county board's responsibility to put it to the citizen. At least put it on the proposal or bond issue or however we do that and let the citizens decide because we're here to serve, to pave the way and to serve the citizens. And, and I think in my office that I'm sensitive to the needs of the citizens. So if there's a need for a program and they want a mileage or a tax, uh, it's our responsibility to provide that.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Baron.
Yeah, I agree. When it comes to tax increases, everything has to be looked at. And I agree with the, with the rest of the people on the, uh, forum tonight, that yeah, it has to be put to a vote. Let the citizens decide. If the citizens decide that they want to spend more money to have more funding for programs, then that's the way it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. McLean's still having some issues. Could we get him just to maybe call in like, uh, Mr. Savoy is and at least he could participate that way?
This is Amy. I'm, I'm sure that Paul or Kelly's trying that very thing right now. So hopefully he can come in. We'll give him three minutes. One for each question he missed. Um, one minute for each. We do have one more question. It comes from an organization, um, in the, I guess it's in, uh, northern Michigan and U P called Center for Change. Their question is, what are your thoughts about climate change and how that is affecting our county?
All right. And, um, since, uh, Mr. McLean's still having some issues, I guess we'll, uh, start with, uh, Bob Savoy. Bob?
Yeah, uh, you know, I, I don't know, climate can change, but I can tell you, I'm a fourth generation family, I run the farm here. And things have changed. Uh, we don't, we have peaks and valleys now. You have real cold, real wet or exceptionally dry. When I baled hay when I was a kid, you'd go three or four weeks and just 70 every day in a cool breeze. We used to pray for a day of rain so we could get a day off, but now we just have one summer super dry, next one it's so wet, you can't get your crops off. So there's definitely something going on if you believe in climate change or not. So I, I think it's a real concern and it's a concern we need to address in the future. concern. And it's a concern we need to address in the future. I, I don't know what we can do at the local level, but there is a need.
Mr. Baron?
Yeah, it's a need to be looked at. Like, uh, Mr. Savoy said, whether you believe in climate change or not, I mean, there is something happening there. I'm in the same boat. He, he was there for a while taking hay off. I mean, you really see the differences in the, in the climate over the past few years. What to do about it? Is it man-made or natural? I mean, that's a big question. I mean, everything has to be looked at, but in the end, you just kind of have to deal with the, the weather we're getting now and move on. Thank you.
Mr. Martin?
It's, it's a tough thing for, for local government to deal with. How do we, how do we contribute to, to making the, the climate better? Obviously, it's, it's, it's important that we all recognize that something is going on. As to what the cause is, there, there seems to be a lot of debate about that. A lot of it obviously is going to have to do with fossil fuels. But same time, we can't dump our economy. We, we, we simply have to have fossil fuels at this point. The technology is not there to do otherwise. Obviously, we want to invest in, in green technology, but that's more of a state and a, and a federal issue. It's tough for us to do that. What we need to do is conserve as much as we can and, and realize that, that the world is changing and, and we need to get out front of this. I think there's a huge chance that we can have some economic growth here if we look at green energy, especially wind energy, based on, on the wind that we have.
Thank you, sir.
I'm, I'm back.
Yay, he's back.
It was a struggle. I still don't know how I did it, but here I am.
As long as you, don't touch that button again there, Don.
Okay, now, my, I'm assuming the, the question dealt with climate change, that type of thing. And I have to echo what, uh, Mr. Savoy said relative to that. I'm a farmer. I've been farmer for years and years, and I see the difference here. And we need to do what we can to clean up the environment, so on and so forth. One of the interesting developments that has taken place in the county just lately is the new solar farm that's gone in near Pickford. I was out and drove by it the other day and it's really amazing. There's 40 acres of solar panels that Pickford Township has gotten in and it's going to put on the network or whatever it is that they power runs through. But that's one of the interesting developments. At the EDC, again, we're trying to do what we can for clean energy and that type of thing. It's a struggle, but we need to keep looking for what we, what we can do. Thank you.
Uh, Amy, do we want to let, uh, Mr. McLean answer the other two questions that he was unable to because of the technology issues?
I think that sounds like a wonderful idea.
Okay, so since you asked the questions, I'll let you ask them.
Oh, that means I have to remember what questions those are.
One was regarding homelessness.
That's right. So we had one, what will you do? Or can you do if you were elected to help with our homelessness challenge in the community? And then, do you want to just stop there? You can answer it, do a minute and then?
Yeah, I would say let's do that, do that one, then we'll do the, come back to the other one. Mr. McLean?
I think we need to, uh, I, I guess I look at the developments just lately, the new Arstrom Font House that's going to be opening out on Three Mile Road for high school students that are couch surfing or that type of thing, to help them out there. The Salvation Army and other community agencies have programs that, we'll get back on the screen here, programs that help the homeless when, when we find them. The problem is not being able to find them sometimes. And Mr. Baron had a very good point. We're at the end of the bus route here. And other communities have a problem with homelessness. They give them a ticket as far north as they can get, or they end up in the next town, and we finally end up at the border. The border says you can't go across, so they're in Sault Ste. Marie. We need to reach out to those things. We need to organize help through the United Way and those agencies. They're already doing some things, but.
Thank you on that one there. And then, uh, the final question there, Amy?
So the final question from Mr. McLean is if, what, what would, would you support a request for a tax increase? So we had mentioned how, uh, we had mentioned already on this forum about the mental health and homelessness challenges. And now we also have addressed climate change, potentially some climate change challenges to our county. So would you support a tax increase to pay or to help fund some of these issues?
I am always a little cautious about tax increases. And this is a worthy one. We have been successful with previous tax increases. One was for community action for the senior programs and also for the Meals on Wheels and that type of thing. The community supported that tremendously. I think if we're going to do that, we need to be real careful. We need to do a lot of education relative to the, letting the people know what the issues are and how we can address them and how we plan to address them. But increasing taxes is, is a real ticklish issue anywhere, and in particular in Chippewa County. But I believe if the people understand the need, see the need, that they will respond.
Very good. That gets you all caught up to everybody else there, Don. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Amy, any, any other questions from the audience? I know we're getting close to the end here. It's 8:56 right now.
Nope, we are question free. So if, um, oh, wait, actually, let me see here. It looks like there's a few, oh, here's one, here's a good one. A lack of connectivity is a real hardship in the county. What will you work on to get reliable, affordable service the last mile? So maybe perhaps this could be the last question and then conclusion.
Yeah, we'll do this. This will be our last question for the night. Then we'll do closing statements. And we'll start with Mr. Baron. Mr. Baron?
This is an ongoing issue nationally as well as locally. This is all over the news all the time about rural internet. I think this county has moved in the direction a little bit on the positive for trying to get connectivity. It's going to be tough. It's going to cost a lot of money to get internet into these rural, um, people. But we have to just continue to work with state, state, local and federal government and try to get the funding to push this internet into these rural communities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Martin?
Uh, yeah, actually, I was just dealing with this with the ISD last week. Right now, Jason Kronemeyer, um, over at the ISD and their, and their technology department right now, doing a tremendous job, um, making, literally creating hotspots all over the county, uh, in, in virtually every, every small town, every hamlet, every village that they can find. Because the COVID is, COVID has really magnified how important it is to have internet. It, it's no longer a luxury item. It is something that is mandatory. It's something that's part of the 21st century. It's something our children have to have to succeed, whether they stay here or go somewhere else. And, and the ISD and the schools in partnership with private business, which is really cool, that, that they're working together to make this happen for, for Chippewa County. And I, I think, I think in the long run, we're going to be a beacon for a lot of, of areas on that way.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mc, Mr. McLean?
Yes, the, uh, the issue of connectivity has been around for a long time. I've been on the county commission 12 years. It was one of our issues that we started with. We had a big project lined up. Unfortunately, the federal government decided not to do that. Presently, we have a program, the intermediate school district has been extremely active in this, along with the Eastern UP Regional Planning. And that has resulted in a company called Merit or an organization called Merit to actually come to the county and let us know that they are interested or they are applying for CARES Act money to put in 70 miles of fiber optic cable in Chippewa County. And this would be sort of the middle mile that is missing now. We still don't have the five, the last mile done, but this is a step in the right direction, I believe, and I hope we can continue it.
And Mr. Savoy?
Yes, our rural children, they're certainly disadvantaged with connectivity. But I think we have made great strides in the last year or two. And it looks like there's a lot of things in the frying pan right now that will improve on that. And, and we need to do that, especially with this COVID-19. And, and a lot of people are, you know, taking classes and doing things online. We, we need to make some improvements, but I think we're on the right path. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And that concludes the, the question and answer, a portion of tonight's forum. It's now time for each candidate to get a, a minute and a half to do a closing statement. And we'll start with, uh, Jim Martin. Jim?
Thanks. Again, WSOO and Lee Women Voters, thanks for, for having this forum. My closing statements are, are rather simple and concise. This is about public service. This is about, quite frankly, and, and yes, pun intended, Coach Martin has a track record. We've been fiscally responsible. We have worked together. Our board has, quite, quite frankly, with our administrator, three Democrats and three Republicans, yet most of our votes are unanimous because we, we check our egos at the door. We, we aren't partisan in any way, shape or form. We do the people's business. And quite frankly, you've got six tightwads helping to run the county. And, and as such, it's, it's allowed us to, in that frugality, it's allowed us to put money away in the rainy day fund. And let's face it, with COVID-19, it's pouring outside. But that's what it's for. And that's why we are so tight with the money. It is not an effort, though, just of, of the county commission. It's an effort of all of the departments, which are professionally run and who will, at the end of every, every fiscal year, give us money back. And we will in kind then not cut their budget the next year. And it's allowed the county to, to grow and prosper, but more importantly, to be secure in, in our budget and also be able to take care of the promises that we have for our retirees and, and moving forward that we can keep this county strong. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McLean?
Yes, I want to thank the Lee Women Voters for this opportunity to introduce myself and to present and explain my position on these various issues. Chippewa County is a great place to live, work and raise a family. I want to continue to work with all the residents to make it even better for the elderly, the families and our young people. As Mr. Martin said, over the years, the county commission and the county employees have very frugally kept check on the spending. And as a result, the county is in reasonable financially solvent condition now. And we should be able to ride through this. Hopefully it won't end or it won't, uh, run too long. But that's part of it. I, but I believe there's still lots of work to do. And I hope that, uh, I'm going to do a campaign pitch that the voters will vote for me so I can continue to work as your commissioner on Chippewa County for efforts.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Savoy?
Yes, I think two of the most important things to me as the commissioner are, are children and our seniors. And I have dedicated 44 years as a public servant and serving this community and our citizens. I did say I have a good understanding of working knowledge of the county departments and different agencies. I've been involved in this for many, many years. And I think I have a proven track record that the citizens, uh, trust me. I've, I've been elected three times, and I hope I will be elected the fourth time. I still have more to give. I care. And, and I would like to hope when, you know, that I make a difference. So thank you. I, I appreciate being involved in this tonight and everyone that put all the effort into allowing us to do this. And, and, you know, we, we need to do more of these things. It's an awkward year for campaigning. Typically, I, you know, I do hundreds and thousands of doors and you can't do that this year. So this is the only opportunity I have. So please, uh, support me and, and let me continue to serve. Thank you.
And finally, the last closing statement will be from, uh, Mr. Baron. Sir?
Yeah, I would like to thank you, Mark and WSOO and Amy from the League of Women Voters. It's been a privilege to be included in this this evening. And all the other candidates that were here tonight, thank you. A lot of great questions, a lot of good answers. As a lifelong resident of this county, you know, as, as the other candidates have said in their statements, I look forward maybe to, to getting my chance to, to serve the public and be a part of that county commission. I just really enjoyed this opportunity. I'm a newcomer. I think I got a lot of great fresh ideas and I think I can help move this county forward in the future. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And that brings this evening's forum to a close. I want to remind you, uh, first of all, let's thank all the candidates for their participation. Eric Baron, Jim Martin, Don McLean and Robert Savoy for joining us here tonight. Thank the, the audience here for, uh, attending this evening's forum as well. We want to remind you to visit www.vot411.org for your election information. And don't forget to vote. It's just a few weeks away, November 3rd. Or get your absentee ballot into the clerk's office as soon as possible. You didn't miss too much of the vice presidential debate that's going to be taken, that's underway right now. So you can flip over there and watch the fireworks over there. We didn't have too many fireworks here, but had a good, good conversation, a lot of great ideas. And we appreciate, uh, I want to thank Paul and Amy and everybody who worked so tirelessly to put this event on and, and appreciate them allowing WSO to be a participant in this. And, and I agree, I would like to do more of these. I've always wanted to do one of these here on the radio station. I think this is a great first opportunity for us and we look forward to hosting more. There will be another forum next week. And actually, we're going to carry it here on WSO for the two candidates that are running for the 107th House District. And we'll have more about that in the next week, but that'll be next Wednesday night as well. So, Amy, any, did I forget anything, Amy?
No, you did a fabulous job as a moderator. So thank you so much, Mark and WSOO. And thank you so much to all the candidates. Thank you. We really truly do appreciate you stepping up. And there was two candidates that weren't able to make it tonight, but we wish everyone well in your campaigning. And for voters, please go out, get that absentee, get it turned in and go vote November 3rd.
Absolutely. Well, that'll conclude it. We'll let the people that shut it down, shut it down. Thanks for joining us here on 1230 WSO, Sault Ste. Marie.